Meeting to order. If you'd like to make a public comment to the Board of Education, please complete our public comment card from Ms. Hughey and we will call you in the order that we receive them during Agenda Item Number 11. Public comments are an opportunity for the community to address the Board, although there is no dialogue. All study sessions, special meetings, and business meetings of the School Board are conducted in public and always offer an opportunity for the public to come before the Board. Our agenda and accompanying information are posted on our district website on the Saturday prior to our Monday meetings. You can find it by clicking on About Us, then clicking on Board of Education, and then clicking on Agendas. Public comments are limited to three minutes each. Our monthly Board of Education Business Meeting is available to watch live on CCTV, Channel 19, WBTV, or Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. We adhere to our Board norms, including our social contract, which is that we, one, listen to understand, two, be respectful, three, model our district four Cs, which are communicator, collaborator, critical thinker, and contributor, four, practice confidentiality, five, focus on the whole district, six, no surprises, and seven, we govern, not manage, we steer, not row. Item two on our agenda is our student liaison reports, and we will begin with our West Bloomfield High School Liaison, Ms. Lexi LaFara. Welcome.
So, in March, we had our, oh, so Unified Basketball. That was the weekend of the 5th, which is when our special needs students and our Link students come together and we had a tournament. We've been playing these games throughout the basketball season. We've had like five or six games, but with some snow days, we had to make some games up. Our tournament was at Troy Athens High School, and it was super fun. We played three games and we won all three of those, and then we went to the championship game, and we unfortunately lost by two points, but it was super fun and it was really nice just bonding with all of the kids. The Swamp, it's been super fun because we have been going to volleyball games and basketball games, and as you guys know, we had Friday and Saturday, which was super fun at the girls' game, and it was just, it was a lot of fun. So, Winter Fest Week, that was the week of the 11th to the 15th, and normally we have a pep assembly at the end of the week and a dance, but unfortunately, we couldn't have that due to COVID. So, we had spirit days every day, and we tried to have something either after school or during the day. So, one of our spirit days was Twin Day, which was super successful. Anything But a Backpack Day, this was so much fun. A bunch of people bought like a really, a lot of really random things, and it was just a lot of fun. Winter Fest Court, so this is the same thing as Homecoming Court, except, again, there was no pep assembly because we couldn't go outside because it was a little cold, but every winner for each grade freshman doesn't ever picture it because someone was absent. But they made a video, and then we're going to turn it into a TikTok and have this little promo video for them, but they got a sash and they all got these little crowns. Volley Buff, this was something new. We've never done this before. So, it was a boys' volleyball tournament, and they all got matching shirts, and there was five to six on a team, and it was right after school at 2:45 and it ended at like 3:00, 3:30, and Student Council, actually, the junior class, is wanting to do a basketball tournament, something like this. It's going to be a three-on-three in April, we're hoping, and we raised a lot of money and it was just something new and fun. Coffee House, so this was kind of just like a talent show and you got to sign up, and we had a lot of singers, which was so amazing. They all had great voices. And Trivia Night, this was also, we've never done anything like this before. It was in the cafeteria right after school. My team unfortunately did lose. We weren't that great at it, but it was just something new and a lot of people showed up, so that was really good. Survivor, this was during the day at school, two representatives from each grade had to do like a race or build a Jenga tower, and you were versing other grades, and every grade like eliminated one person each day. Winter Fest Wishes, so you were able to place an order for two weeks prior to Winter Fest Week, like asking for a smoothie brought to your fourth hour or a Chipotle meal or something, and it was super fun. There was over like 150 orders or something that had to be placed. Leadership Awards, so the Award of Excellence is awarded to leadership and StuGo. You have to put together this binder of kind of just everything that you've done this past year, so fundraisers and anything like that, and West Bloomfield won Leadership and Student Council Award of Excellence, and, so sorry, and Dan Wisely and Anika both won Unsung Hero and Student of the Year for Leadership at the Conferences. Our Girls' Basketball Team, they won State, which was super, super fun. It was so amazing going to both games. I was unfortunately not able to go on Saturday, but Friday was so much fun and there was a lot of school spirit. And our Girls' Snowboarding Team also won State. So, our sports teams are just doing really good, and that's actually all I have. Does anyone have any questions or anything?
So, I have one. Are most of the activities that you had, I mean, a ton of activities, are most of those planned by leadership, or is it in, what other groups plan all these events?
So, that was all leadership because that was Winter Fest Week, which is just like Homecoming Week, but like Student Council, how I was bringing up the basketball tournament, that will just be a fundraiser for us.
That's great. Does anyone have any follow-up? Fun times at West Bloomfield High School?
It was really fun.
And congratulations on your great accomplishments, ice skating this weekend. So, we're all proud of you too.
Well, thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
Great. Have a wonderful spring break and we'll see you in April.
You guys too.
Next is our Oakland Early College Liaison, Mr. Marcus Johnson.
Well, hello, hello. It'd be hard to follow that, but I'll do the best I can. So, to start, due to some scheduling changes, we moved our Chill Fest event to be this Friday to mark the beginning of spring break. Now, as a reminder, Chill Fest is designed to be an event where students can basically take a break at the end of the day and just have fun with each other. We're going to have snacks and movies and even dancing, just to get the spirit of community and whatnot, as we try to do. Last week for St. Patrick's Day, students were all given a little Good Luck Clover with Green Jolly Ranchers to get into the spirit of the holiday. I think more Jolly Ranchers than clovers were taken, but you know what? It's the thought that counts. At the beginning of the month, we participated in a Spirit Week also, with Monday being a blackout day to mark the ending of Black History Month. Tuesday was Mismatched Day, which I thought was quite interesting to see. Wednesday was also Anything But a Backpack Day. I witnessed some of the craziest things I've ever seen. I've seen, I saw strollers, coolers, laundry baskets, someone attempted to use their sibling as a backpack. So, yeah, fun things. It's really fun to see everybody get into the spirit of things, so it was really fun to see that. Thursday was Twin Day, and Friday was Dress-Up Day. It was very interesting to see how many people actually dressed up, and Ms. James actually came to talk to us that Friday, and she noted, as well as we did, how lucky and rare it was that we convinced Mr. Borders to dress up in a suit. We all found that to be quite funny as well. So, it was really enjoyable for us all to experience that and to see everybody participate in that. On Friday, we took a field trip to the Bonaventure Roller Rink. I will note, I have not skated in like six years. Did I almost fall? Yes. Did I still try? Yes. It's determination that goes. To get a theme for this, for the day, students and staff participated in a Decades Day, which was really fun. So, we had the 9th and 10th graders dressing up in the 70s, 11th graders were dressed up for the 80s, 12th graders for the 90s, and 13th graders dressed up in the early 2000s. I thought it was quite interesting to see all the staff members getting involved, so we had a lot of fun with that. Our National Honor Society Chapter has recently been hosting fundraisers for Multiple Scoriosis Awareness Month. That's March. We've been selling ribbons and pizza, and all the proceeds from these donations are, from these fundraisers are donated to the Multiple Scoriosis Foundation, and the goal with that is to help fund anything patients need, such as home improvement things, transportation, medication, all that type of stuff. Oh, our Film Club has begun accepting entries for this year's Film Fest. So, the basis of this are, is students are able to create films, up to 10 minutes, on any topic they choose to. They submit it and it's able to be viewed by the whole school, so we're all very excited to see how that goes. And again, our Green Club has continued with their bagel sales to help plant trees. As a reminder, every dollar donated goes towards planting one tree. They have also led a wonderful recycling initiative in our building, and they have worked diligently to make sure all recycled goods go to the necessary facilities. I wanted to give them a shout-out because not many people would notice things like that. That is all I have for today, but I'd love any questions, if you have any.
Dr. Hirsch?
I have one question. Did you enjoy your birthday two days ago? I certainly did enjoy my birthday, Dr. Hirsch, thank you.
Well, happy birthday. I have one question. Film Fest, is that like an event where everybody comes and watches them together, or are they posted?
So, it's likely going to be a bit of a both thing. I would assume they would show them at like the town, a town hall that month, but it's also possible they'll be emailed to all the students and we can all watch them and vote for our favorites and whatnot, or they'll likely be shown in our focus classes. I could see that being a possibility too. I don't have that much as far as how we'll see them, but I can definitely get you that.
Well, if it's open to other people, will you let me know and I will let the Board know?
Of course I will.
If somebody wants to participate in?
Absolutely, absolutely. I will definitely get you that information.
Wonderful things are happening at OEC, and thank you so much for bringing all the information in such a wonderful way and sharing it with all of us.
I try to, I try to.
Love it. So, Agenda Item Three this evening is our Determination of our Superintendent. At this time, I'd like to highlight the extensive superintendent search process that was conducted by our Board of Education. We reviewed five superintendent search firms and selected two firms to interview on December 6th at a regular Board Study Session. We chose Consultant John Silvery of the Michigan Leadership Institute and approved, and approved the contract on our December 13th at our regular December Business Meeting. Our intensive planning began the following day on Tuesday, December 14th, during a special Board Workshop. We immediately opened a survey to all stakeholders that asked the following questions. Question one was, what are the key skills, abilities, and characteristics the new superintendent of West Bloomfield School District should possess in order to be highly successful? Question two, what are the top five strengths of the West Bloomfield School District? Question three, what are the three to five greatest challenges our district currently faces? Question four was a question that would best describe you, the person that was taking the survey, and you could select all categories that applied. The categories, the categories were student, parent or guardian, West Bloomfield School District employee, contracted staff employee, community member, resident within West Bloomfield School District, and non-resident of West Bloomfield School District. Using the survey data of almost five, 400 responses, we worked with our consultant and created our candidate profile. This profile was integrated into the job posting that was open for five weeks, from Monday, January 10th to Friday, February 14th. On Wednesday, February 23rd, the Board met during a special meeting and reviewed all 22 applicants. Each Board Member thoroughly reviewed the AppleTrack application, resume, cover letter, and we looked for candidates that best matched our candidate profile. The Board reached consensus on three applicants and invited them for a first-round interview. Those first-round interviews were conducted on March 1st and 2nd. The Board held a special meeting on March 2nd, and we narrowed the field to two candidates. One of the two remaining candidates removed themselves from the process. The entire community was invited and welcomed to attend one of seven stakeholder Q&amp;A meetings with our candidate on Wednesday, March 9th. That same evening, the Board conducted a second-round interview of Dr. Danya Bazey. Three Board Members scheduled a site visit at Ferndale Public Schools on Tuesday, March 15th, where we spent the entire day touring a few of the facilities and conducting our own stakeholder group meetings. We were fortunate to meet with Ferndale School Board Members, teachers, support staff, students, parents, community members, school administrators, and central office staff. It was an insightful day, and we thank the Ferndale School Community for opening their district to us and for the thoughtful and candid conversations that will help guide our critical decision. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to thank all of our wonderful students, staff, families, and the community for engaging in this important process with us. The information gathered from our initial survey has guided us throughout the entire process. The feedback forms collected following each interview and stakeholder Q&amp;A meetings, I believe, has provided the Board with ample information to make a recommendation this evening. At this time, I would like to poll all School Board Members. When I call your name, please state whether you would like to hire Dr. Danya Bazey as our next superintendent, or that you would like to reopen the superintendent search. I will start with Mrs. Finkelstein.
Thank you, Mrs. Brickman. I have reviewed Dr. Bazey's application, every one of those community feedback forums, and participated in two lengthy interviews and the site visit. I find Dr. Bazey to be a highly respected, hard-working, and student-centered leader. She is an experienced superintendent whose leadership style, personality traits, and communication skills align with our candidate profile that was developed with input from our stakeholders. I wholeheartedly support Dr. Danya Bazey to be our next superintendent.
Thank you. Mrs. Forehand?
I feel very confident that our school district would be well-served by Dr. Danya Bazey, and I wholeheartedly support offering her the position of West Bloomfield Superintendent.
Thank you. Mrs. Evans?
Thank you, President Brickman. I too read every community feedback form, the forms that we filled out for surveys, participated in Board Interviews, read the report from my fellow Board Members in regards to site visits, and followed the extensive process in which we laid out as a West Bloomfield Board of Education to pick our next leader. With that information, I confidently support Dr. Danya Bazey as our next superintendent and recommend so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Mr. Ferguson?
I just want to say thanks to the community for the, for their participation and for the Board Members and everybody involved with this, for the transparent process. You know, many people reached out to us via email and being in person just to share their concerns and their, their, expressed their goodwill for West Bloomfield, and taking all of that into consideration, I am excited to recommend that we hire Dr. Bazey.
Thank you. Ms. Beatty?
Yes, as my prior Board Members mentioned, that we went through an extensive search process, included the community. Based on all the information that we received from the community and from our candidate, she completely aligns with the needs of our district, both in her traits and attributes, so I wholeheartedly support the hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hirsch?
Dr. Bazey is a once-in-a-lifetime type of leader who is able to improve equitable education outcomes for students. Her integrity and mission to keep what is best for children at the forefront of her professional decision-making is always evident. It is, it's my honor to be able to have Dr. Bazey as superintendent. I wholeheartedly also endorse her unequivocally.
Thank you, Dr. Hirsch. We were so fortunate to have so much community feedback, and the site visit was extremely eye-opening and inspiring. Her background in strategic planning is a strength which entails the inclusion of best practices and strategies, the ability to foster a spirit of excellence within a school district while fostering a collaborative environment to move the vision forward. Her staunch support of all student populations and system thinking, and system thinking has allowed for a culture where historically marginalized groups are prioritized in the same manner as all populations. Within a community relationship model of district support and all students has the opportunities to succeed. I 100% am confident that Dr. Danya Bazey will be the perfect fit for our continued leadership for West Bloomfield School District. So, Mrs. Beatty, with that, do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Dr. Dana Bazey as Superintendent of West Bloomfield School District, subject to a mutually agreeable contract, and authorize President Brickman and Vice President Hirsch to discuss contract terms with Dr. Bazey.
Do we have a second? The motion to appoint Dr. Danya Bazey as Superintendent of West Bloomfield School District has been moved and seconded. Any other further questions or comments from my Board Members?
Mrs. Brickman, is it an appointment, or is it offering, pretend contract negotiation?
Right. It's an appointment until we finalize the contract negotiations, so I want to thank my Board Members for their diligence and the time commitment and the exhaustive research and reading and focus on this most important job that we have as School Board Members. So, I applaud all of your efforts and I'm thankful. And so, I believe we are ready for our roll call vote. Beatty?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Finkelstein?
Aye.
Forehand?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Brickman is aye. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you, everybody. Now, just so you know, we have a No Electronics Rule at our Board Table, but when I move on to Agenda Item Four, I will be texting Dr. Danya Bazey to let her know she is actually at a Board Meeting herself tonight, conducting her Board Meeting, so I can't call her, or else we would be calling from the table to let her know, and, but this is what we're going to do. I'm going to have to text her, so just know that that's the text I'm making. I'm not on my cellphone. So, Item Four on our agenda is our Learning Services Update. Mr. Scott Long, Assistant Superintendent for Learning Services, will address the Board.
I just want to say thank you, Board, for what an extensive process. You did a phenomenal job navigating that and finding a great candidate. We're super excited. I know our audience is super excited as well. It's going to be a privilege and honor to be able to work and learn from her, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I'm also equally excited to do our Learning Services Update tonight. We've talked time and time again about what we want to accomplish for our kids, 100% of our kids mastering rigorous academic standards, 100% of our kids being exemplary in the four Cs, our portrait of a graduate, being exemplary critical thinkers, communicators, collabora, collaborators, and contributors. And as 100% of them achieve that goal, doing so in an environment that provides socio-emotional growth and learning opportunities, extreme value for equity and diversity and belonging, and we want to be able to open up doors for all of our kids. It's very important. Throughout the year, we've had the opportunity to have different schools come in and present. If you remember, our preschool came in and talked about how we have that foundation, where our littlest of learners have the opportunity to create, to play, to use their imagination to learn socially emotionally. We had a chance for our Doherty staff to come in and talk about Ruler and the impact of that social-emotional learning curriculum that is taking place. We had the opportunity to hear from Gretschko about phonics and decoding and word study and how that plays a huge role in our youngest readers' ability to read and learn how to read. We had a chance to hear from Roosevelt Elementary about Capturing Kids' Hearts, a systemic program throughout our district, just like word study is at the elementary level, where we connect with kids, create self-managing classrooms, and just empower our learners to be in a phenomenal community. And tonight, we're going to extend and continue to talk about things that happen systemically throughout our district by hearing from Scotch Elementary and Chico Elementary. And Scotch Elementary is going to begin, and they're going to talk about Bridges Mathematics and how that helps prepare our kids to be exemplary in the four Cs, how it prepares them to be phenomenal when it comes to mastering rigorous academic standards, and then following that, we're going to have our Chico staff come on up and talk about Reader's Workshop for the same reasons. So, at this time, I'd like to call up the Scotch staff. Oh, we're going to, we're going to do Chico first?
We're going to do Chico Elementary first.
Psych.
That's just what they have.
You can clap for them too.
Very nice to see everybody sitting here again. I feel like it's been a long time sitting in front of you. So, thank you for having us tonight. Thank you to the Board and to central office staff. It was really exciting to see some of you back in the building last week, so we appreciated your visit and we hope you enjoyed it. Really excited tonight to be joined by Shahunda Van Ostrand, who many of you probably already know. Shahunda is our literacy coach, our information and technology specialist, 5th grade math teacher this year, wears many, many hats in our building, and I am forever grateful for all that she does for the students and staff at Chico. The same is true for Suzie Engelhardt, who was supposed to be here presenting with us tonight, but she is feeling a little under the weather unfortunately, so I just wanted to give her a shout-out because she really was instrumental in helping to put this presentation together as well. One of the things that I have absolutely loved as a leader in the building at Chico is seeing students develop a love for reading and becoming well-versed in the Reader's Workshop model and really learning all about that has been key to, I think, my success in terms of understanding what's expected of students and staff at Chico, and so Shahunda is going to talk a little bit about Reader's Workshop and what the model entails.
I think one of the most important things about Reader's Workshop is providing students with authentic reading experiences. I mean, if we want them to really love reading, we have to give them the opportunities to read. So, keeping true to our model and making sure that we are keeping our lesson, our mini lessons, mini, to 10 to 15 minutes, so that the students can then engage in that work independently and we can support them, is really instrumental to the Reader's Workshop teaching model.
Shahunda, can I just have you move the microphone? We can all hear you, but I don't know if people at home will be able to hear if the microphone's not in view.
Okay, sure. No problem.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So, we've been working this year focusing on strengthening the workshop for all teachers and students at Chico Elementary, and I think that's key. A lot of times, we talk about strengthening it for our teachers to make sure that they are implementing it, but it's also important that the students understand the model also.
Oh, it's me already. Okay. So, in terms of those instructional supports and supporting our staff members, we've been really fortunate this year. First of all, we have, like I said, an amazing literacy coach. It is a .3 position at our school, so we have really been focusing on strengthening whole-group instruction for our teachers, and now we are also working on small-group instruction as well. We've implemented a few different things to support our teachers, so one being coaching cycles. We were very fortunate this year with the help of Scott to have two of the other literacy coaches come to our building and coach our 3rd grade teachers in a cycle together, which was really neat because the collaboration that existed among the three of them was truly something special, and I think that it really helped to push their learning and the students' learning as well. Our teachers are working diligently in their PLC meetings, planning curriculum, unpacking units, so that has been something we focused on, and then I know Suzie would have talked about this if she was here as our reading interventionist, but when we talk about student growth, Suzie has really focused on some of those targeted interventions with specific students and has worked collaboratively with staff members to make sure that whatever plans we're carrying out are being supported in the classroom as well.
All right, so we, this slide's called Divide and Conquer because that's truly what we've been doing this year, especially with everything, with all of the new staff members that we have at Chico. So, at, Mrs. Larkin already kind of spoke to the focus that we had with our three new staff members in 3rd grade and how important it was to get them all on board and making sure that the Reader's Workshop was effective, they were planning effectively, that it was, you know, smoothly operating in their classrooms with procedures. And one of the things that really drives our support of 3rd grade first is that 3rd, the Read by Grade 3 Law. So, we kind of mentioned that also. And just knowing that in order for the students to meet their instructional literacy needs before the end of third grade and kind of focusing on them because, you know, it's really important to us to make sure that all students are reading at grade level during that third grade year. You know, catching up the kids that need to catch up and then continuing to excel the students that are above grade level also. So, we talk about the IREPs. It's really important that all the students that need interventions, they have an IREP based on a very detailed kind of flow chart that we use to look at their scores.
You explain IREP.
IREP is Individual Reading Improvement Plan. And that's where we identify where there's a reading concern, which may lead to possible recommendation of retention. And our goal is to make sure that doesn't have to happen. So, we develop a plan based on where the students are. And then, our job as educators is to progress monitor how the interventions are working, how successful they are, and if they aren't working, that we kind of revise that plan to make sure that it is something that is successful for those students based on their individual needs. So, for the Reader's Workshop model, we just explained it a little bit more. It's really an I-do, we-do, you-do format. So, it's a mini lesson where the teacher is instructing the students on whatever the reading strategy is. And then, the students will do it with us and then they do it independently. So, there is sustained reading time allowed in our day, in our block schedule that we've created, so that the students have that time to then implement those strategies. And then, at the end, we bring the students back to share based on that lesson's focus. I know in the I Center, as the I Center teacher and as a coach, there has been a dramatic increase in our students' reading stamina. You know, I was explaining to Scott earlier, like, in the beginning of the school year, just because of the pandemic, like, it was almost like our students were operating on, you know, a commercial. Like, it was like every three minutes, we were trying to re-engage them in their book. Where now, I see students that are asking for more time than they're already given. And most of them now are given 40 minutes of that sustained reading and they want to read and they have really reignited their love of reading. And so, that is like super exciting. And the teachers have also noticed it. So, it's not just me. It's really building wide that we're seeing students have the reading stamina to go beyond three or four minutes in their book and really sustain those 40 minutes of reading and try those strategies that the teachers are instructing them on.
So, our next steps in conclusion, we are really focusing on strengthening our small group instruction in terms of guided reading and book clubs. And those of you that were able to visit us, you were able to see some of the book club action taking place in Ms. Strutton's room. One thing to note with our book clubs and the small group instruction that we're going to be focusing on is making sure we have relevant texts in student hands so that they really do connect with the books that they're reading, which is very important. Continuing our focus on strategy groups and how we're grouping students based on their needs. And then, we are also focusing on the way that we're progress monitoring, so keeping those anecdotal records, formative assessment, so that we can make adjustments to groups as needed. Ultimately, I will tell you that I am impressed daily by the staff at Chico. When we talk about people who truly care and want to do what's right by kids, these are people that wholeheartedly want to do what's best for kids. And so, I just feel very fortunate to work in a building where everyone is dedicated to students and their learning.
That's an incredible statement right there. And I believe that we witnessed that also last week. And it was so amazing getting into buildings, I have to tell. And everybody here from Scotch, too, like, it warmed all of our hearts to be with kids and to be with our teachers and to see everybody and just build that sense of community once again. So, thank you for that. Who has some questions for anything about reading? I have one. Why do you think they're reading for 40 minutes? Is it the book selections? They're engaged in the books? Are we having the right books for them, for students? Why are they making it 40 minutes now? Like, what is it that they're sustained reading and they want to read longer?
I would say they went a long period without reading. You know, so, if you go from, you know, whether the students can have access to books or access to, you know, sometimes all it takes is someone to recommend a book, right? Or get you excited about a book before you start reading it. So, I just think that even with Pine Tree, like, the kids have access to books. You know, when we closed, they didn't, we did our best to try to get them access to books. I just don't know that they had them. So, now that we are back in school full-time and we can do book checkout and we can, you know, the students are in the classrooms and they can have time to shop, you know, the bookshelves, I really think it boils down to someone forcing them to sit down for a little bit of time, you know, trying to increase that stamina. You know, that was our goal because we couldn't do that with the hybrid model. And then, access to books. And then, just, you know, sharing a love of literacy with kids. I mean, when you have so much time and you have to stick to a schedule and this is the only time you have versus we have a full day back with them again, right? So, you fill some of that time, you know, during good things, sharing books you're reading or just being able to be in the I Center or just talk to kids about books, you know? Make announcements, talking about books or sharing first chapters, just the time is there.
I think some of the lessons, too, you know, finding the just right book.
For sure.
Picking apart the book, right? Looking at theme characters. So, I think that that has a lot to do with it.
It's Beatty.
I just want to identify one of the things that you said that I think is highly important, and we talked about this during our tour, is providing students with books that they, a diverse amount of books, so all students have different literature that they can identify themselves in. And I just want to commend you and the rest of, you know, our school district for addressing that and providing that to the students. And hopefully, that has some type of plays into their, you know, interest to read again. Thank you.
Dr. Hirsch?
As the son of a reading specialist.
I knew that was coming. I could have said it for you.
And an elementary, and an elementary school teacher. I can't tell you how much I endorse a Reader's Workshop. It is absolutely wonderful. Kids who read just perform so well on exams and they get so much out of it. And to tell you, this is the age to start. Because even for myself, I am still in a book club. And I just think, it just... You knew it was coming, didn't you?
Ms. Evans? Yes, Ms. Evans?
Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions in regards to, you mentioned the IREP, so the Individual Reading Improvement Plans and the Third Grade Reading Law. When do those plans actually begin? If we see a student that comes in from a very young age, maybe kindergarten, and can be identified perhaps as a struggling reader. So, when do we begin those plans and then how do we handle that?
So, I believe it's kindergarten. We're 3-5, so I know that we have IREPs from first and second grade. But intervention does definitely begin in kindergarten. Whether there's a formal IREP or not, I'm not sure. But as a district, you know, we have data walls and we collect data and we make sure that even from our very first Fanta-Simpinell reading assessment, that we identify the students that need support. So, that definitely starts in kindergarten. And then, the actual individualized reading plan, the IREP itself, each year, the school year begins with the very first F and P assessment and then the first NWA assessment, so those two data points to determine who needs the actual IREP by law. But we, like, for example, not all of our students that receive intervention support have an IREP. So, we are still supporting all of the students that are performing below grade level, but the students that have an IREP, they just have more paperwork, I'll say. You know, we have to keep very specific progress monitoring notes and identify parents that there's, you know, a possibility that they could be retained in third grade specifically. And I don't know, Scott, you find missing something?
IREP is associated with the law, right?
Yep, that's correct. Yep, I think you nailed everything there.
And then, my second question is, when we talk about books, I know that, I was just talking to Mr. Long the other day about digital books and how excited I get about Akendal. So, how are we introducing our children into the digital age? Because as we continue to mature as a society and so forth and so on, those digital books are very important, so...
So, I can speak to it from two different perspectives. So, in the I Center, we have, especially with Pine Tree when it starts or Pine Cone when it starts in January, the students are very... They get very excited because there are books that we're directing them to that are on digital sites, so they need their device for it. So, we have the Sora app and we have Epic. So, Epic is free up until 4 o'clock. So, we have a little bit more of a time constraint, but that's free for us. So, when the books are available on that platform, that's, you know, an added plus. And so, some of those books are audiobooks as well as ebooks. And then, we have the Sora app, which is actually utilized K through, all the way through our high school right now. So, we have I Centers throughout our district that use Sora and we purchase books for students using that app. So, some students, they really do enjoy the physical copy and then others really enjoy the digital copies. So, we try to make sure that we're intentional when we're sharing those different options to them. And one of the things that we also do, especially in the I Center with Pine Tree is to make sure that the, and Pine Cone, to make sure the books are accessible to all students. You know, our I Center staff also records and reaches out to different staff members to record the books so that the students, if they want to listen to it and it's not available on a certain platform, that they really have every opportunity to access books.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Hirsch has 10 more seconds.
I don't want, don't ever doubt the positive influence you have on your kids, students. I see some of my own children's teachers here and I thank every single teacher because you have a great influence on them. So, I just thank all of you.
And I wanted to add a few things. When we talk about how our readers are increasing their reading stamina and why that's happening, I think I would want to echo what Dr. Hirsch is talking about. The power of a reader that models a readerly lifestyle, our adults that are in the building. Shaunda, you do an amazing job of this. I think you know every single book in the entire world that kids could have access to. And not only do you know what the books are, you know who to get them to. You know what's going to strike a kid's fancy, what's going to set a kid on fire to get them to want to read. Ashley, you model that readerly lifestyle every single day. And then, when we talk about showing what we value, if we show that it's important to read by investing and carving out time throughout the day for kids to read, they know that it's important as opposed to just the teacher standing up and talking for 20 to 30 minutes. And when you think about what Shaunda's talked about tonight and you rewind back to when Gretschko presented about phonics, what you're seeing is with all reading approaches when it comes to instruction, it's all about balance. We're going to provide word study instruction, we're going to provide a mini lesson, we're going to give the kids time, ample time, to be able to read in volumes. We know that kids have to, 25 to 30 books a year at or slightly above reading level is what it takes for readers just to maintain their reading level. And so, that access to books, the choice of books, them being at their reading level is absolutely imperative. And you provide all that in that structure and environment, which I think is super important. And on top of that, we're finding ways to differentiate for groups of readers and individual readers through guided reading groups, through conferring. And so, I just, I think you all do a phenomenal job providing a balanced approach to literacy instruction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll close it out. It usually just takes one book a student loves to inspire the love of reading. It just takes really one book that they can't put down and their whole life changes and they become a reader, so...
Or one teacher.
One teacher with one book.
Sorry.
Well, thank you and thank you for being here tonight and for informing us and keeping us abreast. It's been so long and it's nice to get back into, like, the mechanics of what we're doing as well as those relationships that we're building each and every day. So, thank you for what you do. And please tell your staff thank you for everything that they do, day in and day out, for our students. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to invite up Scotch Elementary next to talk about Bridges mathematics at the 3-5 level.
Just have to invest in more books, Mr. Long.
My mom's books in the basement.
We need to go get them. I got a truck outside, but there's no reason why.
Okay.
Good evening. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to present this evening. I have two wonderful people to my left, Paige Hill, who is a fourth grade teacher, and Stephanie Nafso, who is also a fourth grade teacher at Scotch. Tonight's presentation is on Bridges. Mrs. Hill will talk of Paige. We'll talk about some of the aspects of a regular lesson on a daily basis. And then, Mrs. Nafso is going to speak on the Number Corner and how she utilizes it in her classroom.
So, when Bridges was first introduced, that was probably like six or seven, six years ago. You know, teachers were very skeptical, especially we had everyday math for so long and, you know, we got into the groove of it. And then, here comes Bridges, totally different. And, you know, we were told, you know, the rollout process, it's okay, slow. It was nice having the summer to, you know, look over everything and, you know, reading it. You don't understand it the first year, you don't understand it like just looking at it, but as you start teaching it and as you start, like, living it, you see the impact and you see how effective it is, especially when you're utilizing all the components of it. Because initially, it was, we were said, like, you know, just try out different parts of Number Corner, try out different parts of the Bridges component and then you'll get, you know, comfortable with it. And then, you have students who haven't had Bridges, you know, prior to that year. So, like, you know, math forums, discourse, it was basically trying, like, pulling teeth. And then, you, it was, sorry, Dr. Hirsch. Anyway, so, we go to year two and we see, you know, we get comfortable with it. And year three, and then, all of a sudden, like, you totally see, like, the fruits of your labor. Number Corner, I have passed it on to my students as their baby. I model what I expect and they take the mic and they go around asking for predictions because every month, there is a new calendar grid that really gets the students to start looking at patterns, making predictions. And then, it totally frontloads to, like, the Bridges lessons. So, instead of, you know, teaching a new unit, like in geometry, which is so heavily focusing on vocabulary, new vocabulary, they've already had the background knowledge from your Number Corner lessons. So, calendar grid every month and then a calendar collector where students are collecting, like, you know, three quarters a day. So, you're looking at fractions, you're looking at decimals, you're looking at counting money, telling time, elapsed time. Every month is specific to certain patterns and then collections. And then, there's computational fluency where it, you know, really conceptualizes, like, that, you know, they can, you know, say, like, come up with the answers without even having use of pencil or paper because, like, they conceptualize now. And then, they have problem strings where they start off simple problems and then they're like, Ms. Nafso, this is so easy. I go, but if you utilize this strategy for something that's more complex, like in those story problems that people don't want to tackle, instead, you see, like, students persevere through them. So, Number Corner, you know, some teachers are like, I don't really have enough time, I can't prop that much and it's, and I'm an advocate for this Number Corner because it really truly frontloads and helps for the Bridges lessons. And I've seen it and I will never back down from it. And so, in the past years, I just allow my students to kind of take over. This is their, like, 15 minutes in the morning, they take the mic around, they ask students for predictions and then they ask, can you please justify your answer? Because it's all about justifying, you know? Yes, we got your thinking because it's, I'm like, it's not always about the answer. I want to know your thinking. And, you know, students have learned that this strategy may work for her, but then this strategy may not, but a different strategy will. then this strategy may not, but a different strategy will. So at the end of the day, we say, like, all these little rivers really truly lead to the ocean. So if you are comfortable with this strategy, it's not wrong, because, you know, it's not like before, you know, this is how my teacher did it, so I have to do it that way, but it's not. Some people can decompose numbers differently, and then they come up with the, um, answer at the end. So I truly am, um, excited about teaching this, and then seeing the fruits of our labor as they, um, you know, take the pre-assessments in Bridges, and then you can see that every unit, you see the kids getting more and more, um, answers correct on the pre-assessment when we haven't even taught the units yet, so.
So Number Corner is about twenty-five, thirty minutes in the morning every single day, and this is separate from our actual lessons that we teach. So the lessons, they have different components in them. The main part that we teach are the problems and the investigations. This is the whole group lesson, and they, the students, after they get the lesson, you know, teacher poses a problem, and then the students will take time to independently think about strategies to solve it. And then they'll, you know, pair up with a partner, discuss their strategies. Again, like Steph said, it's not about the answer, it's never about the answer, it's about how you got that answer and what you did to get there. Um, as student, after students work in partners, a lot of times, we go through as a whole class and share these strategies, um, putting student work under our document camera, because even if students did the same thing, their models that they're drawing could be different, and we, again, still get the same answer. Uh, we have formal math forums that we do, where we actually do have students answer problems. These come up a few times during our units. And a, after we, the students solve problems, we take the next day and we actually sit down, and I select students who use specific strategies, and we analyze it, and the kids ask questions, and they kick, they come up and they explain how they are solving all of these problems. Um, Bridges really lends itself to having multiple strategies for anything. Um, so having students be successful, no matter what level they're at, you know, if a student is multiplying and they're challenged to do the standard algorithm, the way that, you know, I was taught, that's wonderful, but then a student who wants to maybe skip count to get that same answer, who might be a little bit lower, who isn't at a higher level, that's still okay in Bridges, and that's what it encourages, that every student can be successful no matter where they're at. Um, the next part of Bridges that is a huge component are the workplaces. And workplaces are, they're engaging math games that go with each unit. There's about four to six that we teach per unit, and then after they're taught whole group, and after students have practiced it in that setting after being taught, they give opportunities during the lessons, um, to go back and play these games with partners, and they have choices, and those stay in rotation for a while until we reach the next unit and new games are taught. And the last big component of Bridges that is very helpful is the home connections, and it is homework, but it's, they go with, right, the, the lessons that we teach, they're not every single day, they're meant to be every, every other day, so it's not overwhelming for our students right now, and they really tackle, it's nice practice for them to tackle those skills that we're teaching in class. And overall, like, when I got here, you know, my first year of teaching, I was nervous, you know, I was jumping right into multiplication, and I was like, how, we, we're just starting? Like, we're just going in it, and they don't, I haven't taught them anything, and they're doing multiplication already? And the, because they've already had three years of common language of coming through, I was shocked my first year here, I'm like, this is incredible that these kids have this prior knowledge to what I'm teaching them, like, right from the get. So it's very encouraging that you really do, it's hard at first, they didn't know, but, I mean, even coming, I just, it was so lovely that the kids were already saying these things and having all these strategies that weren't even being taught yet, I suppose. They just were persevering through them, so it was really exciting.
That's great. So I have, I have one, one observation that I just want to express, because, um, we saw actually in action, the Number Corner, when we visited Chico last week. And the amount of mental math, puzzle mental math that was going on in the classroom was awe-inspiring, like, kids just, it was like a collaborative classroom puzzle mental math engage, just from turning over one card on the calendar. I, it was, it was really impressive, wasn't it?
Double the number plus five of that.
Yeah, I think they ended up getting that. It was really.
You know, it's a glimpse, like, algebra, like, they, I tell them, I'm like, you're doing algebra, and they're like, what? And then taking, you know, even, like, having the, um, CPM experience, which is the middle school math, like, I see how Bridges, like, like, just kind of aligns with what they're doing at the middle school. Like, hey, these area models, yeah, these are the generic rectangles in middle school. So it, it, it really is, um, a, a great program, and then, like, you know, with everyday math, when they were doing lattice, and then they're going to the middle school, and they're like, the middle school teachers are like, what is this thing that they're doing on the, you know? Because there was no, like, there was no connection. Now, like, you just see that it's seamless when they go from mi, um, elementary to middle school, that they do have these strategies that do carry over. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I have Carol, then Ken, then Kristy.
I want to thank you for this presentation, because I remember when we approved Bridges, and, you know, we didn't know, and, and there's always that, like, there's a gap of time after you launch it, as you said, you know, to sort of really, like, get it going, and now you're seeing the fruits of your labor. And math now is, it's not the math that I learned. It's fun, it's engaging, and the kids want to do it, and I'm just so excited to see that, and I'm also very excited to hear that you're realizing the connection now to CPM, a, and that alignment is finally there. So thank you for this presentation and for all you're doing. Love it. Thank you.
Ken?
Hi there. A couple of things. Let's, let's hear it for the Scotch gallery. Wow, nice job. Got the support group with you tonight, that's fantastic. Uh, and, and I have to say, you know, thank you, because as someone who's not allowed to help his kids with math anymore, uh, and I can't really.
That was like, I can't.
Allowed and. It's both, because I really, I took the old-school math and completed an assignment, and then went, my, my daughter went to school and it was wrong. So, but, so, I'm not allowed to, but, uh, but thanks for, you know, really diving into this, and I know it took a few years to really get there, and, you know, making math fun is so important to little ones, because it just builds from there, you know, it snowballs. If it's fun when they're young, and they get to keep on, keep that growth and momentum, and it'll just keep going, and being proficient in math is so important when you're an adult. Even though you might not use algebra all the time as an adult, it's good to know it. You, you use it and you just don't know it, right?
Exactly.
Like they, so right now. But thank, but thank you so much for being here tonight as well. And I have to say, before Mr. Screvo, he's giving me a, he's giving me a kind of a side eye, because I think, because I didn't make it out to Scotch, um, and so, I, I, I'm calling myself out, so give me a date, if I can come for Reading Month, I will glad, anybody that wants me to come out there and read a little something.
You know you are always welcome at Scotch, anytime. If you didn't come, there's a good reason, I know that. No side eye.
I just need to say before Mrs. Forehand.
Cameras are, I'm not, there's no side eye.
Before Mrs. Forehand says what she wants to say, I just want to also acknowledge that you may not use the math every day, but it's the process of learning how to think differently that applies to everything moving forward. It's that, think, it's those thinking skills. Okay, Mrs. Forehand.
Yeah, well, somebody that's already mentioned it, but I was going to say, you guys are sneaking the algebra in completely. I was really blown away by the sophistication of the math that these kids were doing without even realizing they were doing math. I mean, that calendar thing is, is like, you know, as an adult, you have to kind of stand there and figure out, they're, it, decomposing the number and figuring, I, I was very impressed. Uh, I also want to say, last time we saw Mrs. Nafso, she was in her judge's robes, um, presiding over a debate between the colonists and the British, if I'm not mistaken.
I think both of these teachers were, right?
Pretty impressive. And, um, finally, I guess, just a real specific question is, is Bridges, um, our math program K to five, or where do we start it? Right? And then it rolls into the middle school CPM program. Okay, thank you. Thanks for presenting tonight.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. One of the things I, I, I think it could be Bridges, or it could be Tunnels, but your passion it, to teach children, I think is, is what will make any program work. Um, so it, it comes across just in waves, and you could feel it now, and you could also feel it, yeah, you could feel it when we were in the school as well. So, again, it's your passion and your wanting to have children learn, I think, seems to be the most apparent thing, um, that I see, and that is so appreciated, because you bring about that, that love and kindness and caring, I think is necessary, so thank you for that.
Our whole, like, um, my whole mantra is like, is like, if the kids like you, you can teach them anything. So our first step, like, even like with Capturing Kids' Hearts, I know you've done it before, um, heard it before, but it really does start with the relationship. So when you have that relationship, and it could be like the student who you were surprised to see up, um, debating, who would, in a million years would have thought, would stand up in front of the kids, let alone the adults that were, who were in the room. So, um, number one, you know, building that relationship, and then providing a safe environment for the students, and, um, being transparent, like, I'm not, we don't come across, like, we know it all, you know, um, but we do, like, kind of set the bar high for them, and then it's just like, I don't know, it just, it just happens.
That's good. Thank you.
Anything else?
It's a lot of work, and it has a lot to do with your individual personalities and, and commitment, so. But I do circle back real quick to the Number Corner. Uh, one of the things I really enjoyed was the energy in the room with the kids, uh, that critical thinking, they, it, it's like detective work. Right? And I think it's so exciting for the kids to, like, be detectives and try to figure it out, so it's adding that fun detective, and that's how I always tried to sell math to my kids, not as successfully, I'm sure to do with the relationship. But you guys did a fantastic, you're doing a fantastic job, though, so thank you, but it was, it was exciting to watch the energy in the room.
Yeah, with the cards facing, like, back, you can't, they don't know what's, you know, what's there, so, like, the anticipation itself is exciting. And they did not think there was going to be another rule, and they're like, well, what are we going to do the rest of the month? We already know the rule.
And it was a whole different color.
Yes.
We were so excited, too.
Exactly.
Like, but wait.
One hundred percent.
A great day.
You are more than welcome to come in and, uh, watch the kids in action, as they, like I said, Number Corner is all them. I have one student who tells, you know, who's going to be doing the, the flipping of the card and writing and, you know, the spinning, so I just kind of sit back and kind of just, like, watch, and, yeah, it takes time to get to that point, but once it does, you're like, yes.
You're allowing them the opportunity to learn through that. They're doing it full time.
Hear us all day long?
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Just real quick, I'm sorry I wasn't able to come to my kids' alma mater, uh, but I assure you I see those kids eventually.
Nice, yep.
And I will say, we saw in your school, the games happening, I think it was Ms. Brown's room, and the kids, and I asked them how they liked the game, they love the game, so that's another way that they're learning. And I do think our data's showing that we're making progress. Yeah, you know, they said three to five years, and here we are, so, um, it's happening.
Yeah, very grateful. First it was like, huh? But then it was like, yeah.
Anything new.
It's, it's good, it's good. I appreciate it.
Thank you both for coming and sharing. I know Mr. Screvo has something he wants to share.
Before he shares, can I just add a couple of things?
Yes, of course.
Well, it was great when you all visited Scotch. You saw Paige, and you saw Stephanie in their classroom, and it was like synchronized teaching, like, they were, their lessons were the same, but what's beautiful about the work that they do is I walked into the building multiple times, I'll walk into Paige's class, I'll see her doing a math lesson, I'll skip over to Stephanie's room, weird, same lesson, like synchronized teaching, but what's great about it is, Ms. Evans, you talked about the importance of powerful, passionate teachers, which they definitely are, and their place within a professional learning community within a system that's been going for a long period of time, and you can really move some mountains when things like that happen, and when you get committed, teachers that are committed to the process of giving kids consistent experiences that are within a system, you get really great rewards and gains. And so I want to thank you for your collaboration and modeling that, for your staff, and for all of our teachers, and for our students as well. And there's other, another thing I love that you said, I think it was you that said to Stephanie, it's not just about the answer, I want to know your thinking, all these little rivers lead to the ocean. And that just, I think that perfectly sums up the spiraling nature of the math curriculum that we see from K all the way up to five, and all the curriculum that you've heard since Doherty and Roosevelt and Gretschko presented months ago, so thank you very much for your amazing effort.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I, I asked for my five minutes of the fifteen Kendras that I could have to do something a little different. I knew that I had two great teachers who were going to present on Bridges, and I would never pretend to be able to speak as well about it as they do that teach it, and I have never taught Bridges except when I sub.
Yes.
Which most of the kids aren't happy about when I come in there anyways.
Just so everyone knows, this is not a surprise. You let me know, too.
But, uh, it is, it is a wonderful program, and, and I, I'm blessed to be in a building with such great teachers, and I'm going to do something a little different and not recognize a speci, a specific teacher of my building, but a diff, a different set of people that have kept our building together. But before I do that, I'd be remiss not to men, not to say congratulations to Sin on, on her retirement, which I know the board's going to take care of that, I just wanted to make sure I don't say the next thing about recognizing that. And Jerry, off into the sunset to, uh, be, be grandpa for, for the rest of his time, probably is the greatest job you'll ever have. Uh, I see my dad and my father-in-law, the, the different people that they are now that they, they have grandchildren, I was like, Dad, where, where was this? But there's a person behind me, uh, who is retiring this year as well, Kelly Lakis, who I know would, would, um, kill me for even doing this, but she doesn't have to come up, because she'd kill me for that, too. But she is, she's the type of person that every single human being should want their kid to have. I've worked with her for the, for the last, my, my twenty-two years, and, um, she makes me want to be a better person, a better principal, she helped make me a better teacher, because I really shouldn't have taught children to read when I first got there. But she did teach me how to do that, uh, along with Susan Gerald's, uh, another great woman, but I just wanted to make sure that I nominate, I, I recognize Kelly and how much I love you and I will miss you, and I don't know what I'm going to do next year without her as my reading consultant, but we'll figure it out. There's three people that I invited today, I see, I see my administrative assistant came as well, which is awesome, and Kelly also came to every board meeting we've had where Scotch has presented, normally she's presenting, I'm sure, often, but she come, she came to support every single Scotch board meeting I think we've ever had. So that's another testament to her fortitude. But I have three individuals behind them who are our building subs, and I feel, I felt like they should be recognized. We have had several teachers out for COVID notwithstanding, um, and they have, I don't think they've missed a day since we started. They've shown up every day, they don't know what they're doing, by the time they, by the time eight o'clock hits, and they come in at nine o'clock, we've already changed their schedule three or four times, and I don't know how Liz keeps it straight, but she does. Um, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them and to let them know how much that they have meant to me this year, so that I can make sure that when my teachers are out, I have somebody in there that I trust, and that, that does a great job, um, and I, I hope that, uh, they understand how much I appreciate them. So I had Sin after the agenda was already sent to you guys, which I know is a big no-no. I cleared it with Kendra, I went to Dr. Hill, I, I made sure I checked, Stacy, board president, I made sure I checked all my boxes before I even came to Sin. Um, but I do have three star certificates for, for my building subs, and I'd love to honor them right now with that. So I have Laura, Laura Kaposia. Andrew Jadu. And Juliette Jozwick. They have saved me on numerous occasions this year, and I cannot thank them enough.
Okay. And we'd like to shake their hands if they want, or a fist bump or something, so if you guys want to come up, we want to, we want to thank you and congratulate you for your honor.
And while Mr. Screvo's talking to them, I also want to put a shout out on someone's retirement, and she knows where this is headed. My own children's teacher who. One minute, Mrs. Lakis, hold on, I won't use your name, okay? So Mrs. Lakis, I mean, whomever that might be, I wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart. My kids still remember you very fondly, and I get to see you every year. I'm feeling, I'm feeling really old.
Laura went to Scotch, and now she's subbing there, so, yeah, it does make you feel old.
Thank you so much.
Oh, boy. It just makes me feel.
Scribo, thank you. I'm su, I'm sure that they would like to be a photo of your star certificates. Thank you Scotch. Thank you for bringing us number corner and number workshop, what is it? Number?
Bridges and the,
Bridges, all the bridges. And thank you for presenting and, and giving us a recap of what's happening. We know you guys are rock star bridges. Thank you.
I love it. You know what? I was so excited when I heard about me. I was so excited.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Agenda item five is a policy update approval of policy eight-three-nine-zero, animals on district property. And a youth assistance donation acceptance approval. We have discussed this in committee and two study sessions. Mrs. Carol Finkelstein will present the policy update to begin with.
This is actually gonna be the, the short part of the presentation. And again, we did discuss the policy revisions, the need for them. So that we could, um, uh, start a therapy dog program.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if it's on.
It's on. I don't know. I seem to be, I don't know.
Move, move Christie's closer to you. Cuz I don't know if the TV will hear you.
Okay. Oh, there you go. I know yours is working. So yes, we, uh, we did talk about this in study sessions. We've gone through an exhaustive, uh, animals on district property, uh, policy. And this evening, we are, um, we haven't received any further feedback. So this evening, move that Board of Education adopt proposed revisions to board policy eighty-three-ninety, animals on district property per enclosure five A.
We have a second? Hersch? The motion to adopt policy eight-three-nine-zero, animals on district property per enclosure five A has been moved and seconded. Are there any further questions?
I have two quick questions that I know the answer is, is no to both. Uh, who owns the therapy dog?
They are owned by staff.
And do you guys want another PowerPoint?
No.
Never again on that. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. And the second item?
Okay, well, second, uh, part two, um, just let me very quickly also tell you, now that the policy has been revised, I will work with Sin and we will go through, because we, this has now triggered a misalignment with the, um, administrative guidelines. So we will realign that, so that they're, they're totally aligned. So,
That's an administrative position, and that's administrative,
Yeah, but,
Job.
Yeah, but we'll, yeah, we'll help make sure that that gets done and that everything aligns. So, that's part two. So this evening, I have other good things to share. So, as we know, therapy dogs can create a safe, comfortable, happy, judgment-free school environment. Studies show that the benefits of a therapy dog include academic improvement, particularly in reading, improvement in social skills, decreased anxiety, and an improved overall emotional well-being for students and staff. West Bloomfield Youth Assistance has made a very generous donation to establish and support a therapy dog program in our district. Initially, this donation will benefit West Bloomfield Middle School. It will ensure that a therapy dog program is cost-neutral to our district. I would like to thank West Bloomfield Youth Assistance for their generosity. Youth Assistance is an invaluable resource, resource for our students and their families. Youth Assistance is an outstanding partner for our schools and a gem that is unique to Oakland County. I move to accept a ten thousand dollar donation from West Bloomfield Youth Assistance to establish a therapy dog program fund per enclosure five B.
Second, forehand. The motion to accept a ten thousand dollar donation from West Bloomfield Youth Assistant has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Is that therapy dog or therapy animal program?
That is actually a therapy dog program that they are sponsoring.
Does anyone else have any further questions? On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank, um, West Bloomfield Youth Assistance for their partnership and assistance with starting a therapy dog program. I know that it will benefit everybody that is, um, in contact with, with, um, our therapy dog, our future therapy dogs. So I believe we're ready for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Agenda item number six is our gun safety resolution approval. Superintendent Jerry Gerald Hill will address the board.
As we discussed at a, at our previous, um, study session, there's been a rash of violence in, gun violence in schools. And a lot of it has to do with access to guns. This, uh, resolution that the board discussed in, in close, in study session just really stresses the responsibility of gun owners to safely store their guns. Um, and, and, um, I appreciate the board's discussion. I, I, Mrs. Finkelstein, uh, did a great job in terms of streamlining the resolution that you have before you. And, uh, administration recommends approval. Once board approves, we will be communicating, uh, as per the resolution, the importance of safe gun storage and gun, especially in the homes, cuz a lot of homes have guns in them. So we just want students to be safe. Thank you.
Ms. Beatty, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to support the gun safety and safe gun storage resolution per enclosure six.
Second, Evans. The motion to support the gun safety and safe gun storage resolution has been moved and seconded. Are there any further questions or comments? I would like to tell everybody that all, I believe all of our police municipalities offer free gun locks to anyone that requests them. I know West Bloomfield does, but I believe all three, which like, and Keegan, what? Yeah, they all, so, um, it's a free gun safety lock, which could potentially save an accident and a life. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Agenda item sixteen is our network switches bid award. Mr. Kyle Anderson, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, will address the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Berkman, and good evening, Board of Education. Uh, as reviewed with the Board of Education previously, we are pleased to make a recommendation to approve the network switching bid to Delta Network Solutions for eighteen thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and thirty cents.
Ms. Beatty, do we have a motion?
I move to award the network switching expansion project to Delta Net, uh, Network Solutions in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and thirty cents per enclosure seven.
Have a second? Ferguson? Motion to award the network switching expansion project to Delta Network Solutions in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and thirty cents has been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Agenda item eight is our wireless bid award. Mr. Kyle Anderson will once again address the board.
Thank you again. One more technology-related bid award. And that is to, uh, the wireless access point bid to Inacom TSG for twenty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and four cents for work related to the middle school.
Ms. Beatty, do we have a motion?
I move to award the wireless access expansion to Inacom TSG in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and four cents per enclosure eight.
Have a second? Forehand? The motion to award wireless access expansion and to Inacom TSG in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and four cents has been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This is my time to remind attendees that if they'd like to make a public comment, please complete a public comment card from Mrs. Hughie and we will call for public comments on agenda item eleven. The ninth item on our agenda is the Athletic and Physical Education Equipment Bid Award. Mr. Kyle Anderson will once again address the board.
Thank you again. And competitive, uh, competitive bids were opened on March twenty-eighth for the purchase of athletic and physical education equipment. And based on the review of the bids, we're recommending a total award of one hundred one, three hundred eleven dollars and eighty cents to be, uh, awarded to the four bidders as presented in your board docs.
Mrs. Beatty, do we have a motion?
I move to award the purchase of athletic and physical education equipment as follows, totaling one hundred one thousand three hundred eleven dollars and eighty cents per enclosure nine.
Have a second, Hersch? The motion to award the purchase, purchase of athletic and physical equipment totaling one hundred one thousand three hundred eleven eight and eighty cents per enclosure nine has been moved and seconded. Are there any other questions? Carol?
I have to ask one, real quick one, cuz I think we have an incorrect date. Um, you can't open the bids next Monday. I think that was done last Monday.
It was, thank you.
It was the fourteenth. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify for my own sanity that I wasn't losing it. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Next on our agenda is our administrative reports. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Brickman, board, staff and guests. Uh, first of all, I just wanna respond to the topic of discussion around reading. And, um, when I was, I, I, while you were talking, Shaheen, I was reflecting back to my reading history. And prior to, like first, second, third, fourth grade even, I would try to find the easiest books to read because you had to do book reports. And then there was a teacher of mine who somehow figured out what I might like. And, and he recommended that I read the book Tree Gates Raiders. I had no idea what Tree Gates Raiders was. And I read it and then I read another one and another. And so that got me hooked on, on reading. Tree Gates Raiders was, now, I'm sort of dating myself, but I think it was a new book in nineteen sixty. And, and I was reading it in like nineteen sixty-one or two, something like that. And, uh, it, it just opened a whole new world of adventure. And then it's never stopped since then. So it does take one teacher who knows a student well enough to spark that interest in reading. So that was really cool that, I was thinking about that while you were presenting. Uh, but I really wanna talk about tonight, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, it was a great weekend in West Bloomfield School District. We had the first Lego League here. Uh, I, I didn't attend it. I was at, in Lansing for another event. Um, but I understand it was just a fantastic experience for our elementary students. Um, we had our Laker choirs, I think Laker Expression and other choirs got all ones in their competition. A couple of weeks ago, the orchestra did the same thing. Previous to this weekend, as was mentioned by our student liaison, the girls' snowboard team took the state championship. And that snowboard team is only about three or four years old. And, and they've only been in existence for that long. And to come back with a state championship was just fantastic. Uh, but the highlight of the weekend was, uh, we had two, there were two basketball games. The Lakers' girls' basketball played on Friday night and they had an awes, it was one of the most stressful or exciting or entertaining, depending on your perspective, games that I've ever been a part of wat, of watching. And, and the girls were behind by three, up by one, behind by four, up by five. Went back and forth all the way through and they won sixty-six to sixty-three. And just to see that, it was, you couldn't top that. I mean, it was just one of the best games I'd seen, girls or boys, uh, in terms of basketball. And then Saturday, they, they put the icing on the cake and, uh, Sonya and I were sitting by each other for at least half the game. Sonya had to go down and join the students, which, which was cool. But, um, they, the game on Saturday, it was, uh, not quite the fast pace is the Friday night game. But it was a very strategic kind of play game and, and they won fifty-one to forty-two. And so the, to see the expressions on the faces and the excitement that they generated, not only amongst the team, but the students that were in this, in the stands as well. And my wife Cindy and I were having to be in the stands on Friday night, sitting next to people who we didn't know and they didn't know who the Lakers were. And, and the guy said, that is a really good team. I mean, he, and, and he emphasized team, because that's, uh, pretty much what won it. So I'd congratulate the, the Lakers on that success. And then regarding the earlier, uh, appointment of the new superintendent that was, uh, discussed, uh, and voted on. And I'd like to congratulate the board on the ex, the very thorough process. I'm looking, as a outgoing superintendent, retiring superintendent, I'm looking forward to working on a successful leadership transition plan uh, with Dr. Baz, Bazzy. Uh, she's coming to, and I know she knows this, but she'll learn it more. She's coming to a fantastic school district where we have engaged teachers and staff. We have strong leaders, uh, building leaders, central office leaders, Board of Education leaders. We have supportive parents, engaged parents and, and community members, uh, attested to by the, the approval of the numerous referendum we've, we've put out there. And then lastly, but not least, we just have terrific students. And, and the beautiful thing about West Bloomfield is, and I say this, it brought me here, uh, my wife and I here, is, is just the, the diversity, the diversity, any, any definition of diversity, uh, racial diversity, economic diversity, religious diversity, diversity of ideas, uh, it's all here. And it's really, the students are really engaging to be with day in and day out. And I think it is a, a testament to the teaching staff, the very caring teachers that we have here, a, as well as the very, uh, involved parents. So, uh, Dr. Bazzy is stepping into a fantastic opportunity and I know that she'll do real well in it. Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. You, as you were talking about the events that you went to, I'm gonna, it's gonna be wild to go to events and not see you cuz you went to every single event, everything I could find you at. So we're gonna miss that. Of, of all the other things that we're gonna miss. I think in terms of when we talk about the transition to Dr. Bazzy and, and Dr. Hill creating, you know, making sure that that's transition plan is successful, I think strategic planning and the strategic planning retreat comes at a really timely moment for our district. And on Saturday, April ninth, we'll have our strategic planning retreat. I'm really excited about the opportunity to bring sixty stakeholders together from teachers to parents, to paraprofessionals, to administrators, to board members, to sit down and examine our vision, our values, our mission, um, how we're gonna operate, so that later on, we can create goals around that vision and those values and then implement those. We're already working on a team that's gonna be, uh, you know, and responsible for the implementation of those goals. And it's gonna be a really exciting time for us as a school district. One of the things that Dr. Hill talked, many of the experiences, when we think about where we're at as a district and what we wanna accomplish, is just providing opportunities and doors. And I think from snowboarding to girls' basketball, to Lego League, to choir, to the academic experiences that we have, there's just so many phenomenal opportunities for our kids here in this district. And this is the time of year where we're really reminded of that. I wanna thank Christie and Stacy for coming, um, out to the first Lego League Laker Bot Festival and serving as reviewers. We had over twenty teams, um, from the early elementary level that were competing and developing a, a solution to how to get cargo from one part of a community to another, encoding and presenting that, um, just exhibiting the four Cs at its finest. And it was just great because it was fun. We had the community in here, we had kids smiling. It was just a great experience. So, thank you for that. We're on the homestretch here. We're into the fourth quarter as we get back from spring break. There's gonna be a lot of stuff going on. Looking forward to the, the community's involvement and support of that. And I know that Sonya's gonna share a video here in a little bit. But I just wanna thank our staff and our administrators for really a great reading month throughout the month of March and a great Women's History Month. Not only do we offer experiences during the school day, but it's not uncommon to see someone like Shaheen leading a read aloud on Zoom in the evening hours before kids go to bed, or at Doherty on Monday, mystery reader on Zoom. So just a lot of exciting things happening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, very pleased to report that we have, uh, tentative agreements with all five of our collectively bargained groups. So we're very pleased with that. Um, the process, uh, as you well know, is that each group ratifies and then we bring it back to the full board for your review and approval. Um, and I think that process really does lend itself well into our, our next work, working on budget. So, some of those question marks will be answered and we'll have some solid numbers for the fiscal twenty-three budget. And I know, um, you know, having, you, you guys have done a ton of work the last few, few months. And having board members sit on these negotiating teams is a distinct advantage for us. Not only practically, um, when you come back to the board and reporting out, but from the community standpoint, that you really have an understanding, a deep understanding of these employee agreements. Um, and, and you're, you're volunteers, right? So, um, I, I've never seen a board work harder. And I, I wanted to thank you and I, and I'll leave you with just a quote about volunteers. And, uh, it's basically, um, so a good coach can change a game, but a great coach, uh, can change a life. And that's from John Wooden. So, apropos to the tournament going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Ms. James?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Were we missing mics? I guess we're,
Yeah, that's okay.
Good evening, everyone. And yes, March is Reading Month and we are also celebrating International Women's History Month. I would like to bring back to the forefront, Ms. Shaheen Van Nostrand. She is, um, she's just a phenomenal teacher in general and phenomenal person. And when I went, And when I went to Ms. Van Nostrand, and I said, "You know, I'd like to do something where we bring a book to life." I said, "Here's my idea, you just run with it." And she took it. And one thing that we didn't share about Shaheen in terms of her being an avid reader, she's not only an avid reader, but she really has, over the course of the years at CHICO, has really worked to diversify the reading experiences for our students, but not only for CHICO, but she's also worked with the other ICE Center teachers as well to bring a lot of diverse books to the ICE Center as well. Another thing about Ms. Van Nostrand is that she not only reads a lot and exposes students to different genres of reading, she makes connections with the authors. Like, they're her friends. So, you can actually talk to her about any book, but she probably knows or has made some connection with the author as well, too. So Shaheen, I'm going to turn it over to you as you help us celebrate not only March's Reading Month, but also International Women's History Month as well, too.
So, one of the things we did this month, especially this week, is we tried to celebrate Women's Month along with Reading Month, and we did a passport where the students this week are exploring different women in different roles in history. And so, one of the ways to kick it off was to use "She Persisted" by Chelsea Clinton. And so, when Sonya came to me with the idea with the book, I was like, "Flipgrid, I love Flipgrid, and the kids can do it without me." And so, what you're about to see is legitimately the students recording themselves, reading a part of the book with one of the women, one of the leaders in, you know, changing America, and they did it all themselves. I just snipped it all together nicely. So the kids, you know, they really, you know, they took the lead on this. So, we'll get to hear them kind of share part of "She Persisted."
Oprah Winfrey's grandmother expected Oprah to follow in her footsteps and become a man. Oprah knew even as a little girl that her dreams would take her somewhere else. She persisted in turning those dreams into her reality and became a media superstar, working in movies, books, magazines, TV, and most of all, television, where the Oprah Winfrey Show remains the highest-rated talk show of all time. The biggest adventure you can ever take is to live the life of your dreams.
She persisted. When Ruby Bridges was in kindergarten, many schools across America, practically in the South, still refused African-American students their equal right to an education. Ruby wouldn't be treated like a second-class student, and she persisted, walking for weeks past angry, hateful protesters to integrate an all-white elementary school in New Orleans. That faithful walk to school began a journey, and we all must work together to continue moving forward.
After Maria Todd's chief family moved to California, partly to support Maria's dreams of becoming a dancer, she was teased by students in school for her Native American heritage. And later, was encouraged to change her last name to something that sounded Russian. Since many professional dancers at the time were from Russia, she persisted, ignoring all, ignoring the taunting and poor advice to become the first great American prima ballerina. It never occurred to me to say, "It hurts to do that."
Margaret Chase Smith. As the first woman to serve as both a U.S. Representative and a U.S. Senator, Margaret Chase Smith could have let that fact alone be her legacy. Instead, she persisted in championing women's rights and more opportunities for women in the military. Standing up for free speech and space exploration, the head of NASA once noted that we wouldn't have put a man on the moon without Margaret. Quoted by Margaret, "The right way is not always the popular and easy way. Standing for right when it is unpopular is a true test of moral character."
Nellie Bly became a reporter and part because of a male writer had said that working on women were a monstrosity, and she wanted to prove that women could do anything. At times, putting her safety at risk, she persisted through, throughout her career in exposing real monstrosities, pretending to be a sweatshop worker and a patient in mental hospital, to show how badly people were treated. I have never written a word that did not come from my heart. I never shall.
Watching fictional judges on television inspired Sonia Sotomayor to want to be a real-life judge when she grew up. She knew she'd have to speak English as well as she spoke Spanish, study hard in school, and manage her diabetes before she could wear a judge's robe with gavel in hand. She persisted, eventually becoming a Supreme Court Justice and first-ever Latina to sit in America's highest court. A quote is, "I have never had to face anything that could overwhelm my native optimism and stubborn persistence I was blessed with."
Sally Wright always believed women could succeed in any math or science career. Although not everyone agreed, she persisted, and she became the first American woman in space. But that wasn't enough for Sally. She traveled into space once more, and then created science and engineering programs specifically for girls so she could help generations of young women achieve their dreams, too, both on Earth and in outer space. Young girls need to see role models in whatever career they may choose just so they can picture themselves doing those jobs some days. You can't be what you can't see.
Harry W. Tubman was born a slave, and his story could have ended there. Instead, she persisted escaping from slavery and becoming the most famous conductor on the Underground Railroad. She risked her life many times to leak homeless slaves to freedom, including her family, friends, and strangers. Every person she led to freedom arrived safely. I should fight for my liberty as long as my strength lasted.
To learn about women who persisted, read "She Persisted: Thirteen Amazing Women Who Changed the World."
That was awesome. So, thank you, Ms. Van Nostrand. And I just appreciate the work that you're doing at CHICO, and not only for March's Reading Month, but what you do each and every day in helping students to persist in their journey to love and to have that love for reading. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And just to kind of wrap up, I did send out another, remember last month where you saw my Samor for Black History Month? We did another for Women's History Month, as well as March's Reading Month. This time, we had a total of over four thousand, almost five thousand hits to that Samor. Actually, it was four thousand six hundred and sixty-three hits to the Samor. And that was the one to the community. And we also sent a separate Samor to our staff. And within that Samor, it has resources and support for teachers to help support March's Reading Month as well as Women's History Month. One thing that I did have the pleasure of working with the OEC students this month as well, I presented to them, the same Friday that Mr. Borders had a suit on, he had, I was, I presented to their town hall. And this was a follow-up from the fall. They had a session on microaggressions. And this time, we did an in-service with the students. And it's just so insightful, the depth of the conversations once you get into it with our students. And we talked about conscious and explicit bias, as well as implicit and unconscious bias. And where they see it in the community, where they see it throughout their lives, have they experienced it at school? Have they experienced it with their student, with their, with their peers? And the honest conversations and some of the solutions that the students were able to come up with. But just having the opportunity for them to have a safe space, to have the open conversations about some of their experiences, and what do we do with those experiences? How do we handle that when they are faced with instances where they may feel that there's implicit or unconscious bias, or there is some direct, explicit bias? How do you deal with it? So, that was about a forty-five-minute conversation, and we could have gone on for days if we allowed the students just to continue on. But I will be planning another wrap-up with the students because they do want to have those conversations, and they do want to have some resolve and have that total respect in terms of building that community with each other at OEC. So, that is my report. And again, Ms. Van Nostrand, thank you very much.
Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is it possible, I'm not sure who specifically addressed this question, too, but if we could give the board an update on how we're proactively offering assistance to our Ukrainian students?
We did send a letter to our families. And one thing that we do have to realize and recognize is that we have families from both areas.
Yes.
And that we have to lend the support in terms of our care and concern for any other families that may be experiencing or have relatives that may be experiencing what is going on in the Ukraine and the things that may be hurtful to our kids. So, just being mindful. So, there was a letter that was sent to our school community for that, I think. That was in our last update, right? That we did send that letter out to our school community as well, too.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, we are now at Agenda Item Eleven, which is our public comments. Do we have any? So, Item Twelve on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. Ms. Beatty?
I moved to approve the following consent agenda items per enclosure twelve A through F.
Give a second. Finkelstein? The motion to approve the consent agenda item per enclosure twelve A through F has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Item thirteen is our Good for the Order. Do any board members have anything? Mrs. Forehand?
Mr. Long, you already mentioned the Lego League on Saturday, but I just want to reiterate personally how much fun it was to see. They were these, what, first, second, and third graders? Just amazing, kids coming in with the confidence to speak to people, to adults that they didn't know, and present their Lego models and their problem-solving and their poster boards and all. And I just think it's such a valuable skill. I mean, there's lots of things kids get out of that experience, but that confidence to stand and do some public speaking, even on that small scale at such a young age, is just, I mean, that is something that will benefit them their entire life. So, thanks to the coaches, because I know a lot of parents have put in a lot of time, and the resources that the district's provided for that program and the kids who participated, it was a lot of fun. I just have to say, you said something I've never heard before, and I think we need to really adopt it. And that's the whole idea of our kids being wave-makers, since we're Lakers. And you're talking to first and second and third graders, talking to them about being Lakers for life, even if their own school mascot is not the Laker. I think that whole concept of us being a K to twelve or K to thirteen school system is so important to really build that connection across our school boundaries. And I love the idea that our students and our school community can be wave-makers. I just, bravo, and I need a T-shirt, you know, that says that.
It's coming, coming. It's one of the goals before the year ends. Those would be infiltrating the district, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just have to, it's been a couple of weeks, but I wanted to give a shout-out to our West Bloomfield Middle School students and the cast of Footloose. It was a fantastic production, and it was exciting to be back in person and just, you know, watching them have a blast doing that, and everybody who supported it and came out to enjoy it as well. So, lots of great things happening, you know, sports, fine arts, academics. We've got it all, people, so, thanks.
At the end of our agenda, so on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you.
Let me just say one more thing.
Yes.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I know, we all want to go home. But I just want to say thank you to everybody on the board for coming out and visiting our elementary schools over the past week and a half. Principals, the teachers, the kids, love seeing your faces. I love being able to show off the amazing things that are happening in our schools. And I know it's time under your busy schedule, but it makes a huge difference, so thank you.
I think we loved it, and it's a good reminder for board members because when we're sitting at this table, it's those people that we're affecting. And that's why we do what we do, and I think it's a perfect reminder, so. And another shout-out to you for the emcee for Lego League. I mean, if anyone witnessed him on opening day, you should have seen it. It was a replica of opening day, but for our little first, second, and third graders, they loved it.
I have a face for broadcasting.
I think so, I think so. You're great. I was thinking, actually, we should get the tunnel up next year.
Oh, that would be a good thing.
And let them run through the tunnel.
I would love that.
Right? So, that is that. So, everybody, please have a great week and a very restful and fun spring break, and we will see you back here in a couple of weeks. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.